Plant and Commission Meeting for Wednesday, September 24th, 2025. And our first order of business is the approval of the September 10 minutes. Everybody had a chance to look them over? Any changes in motion?
Motion to approve.
All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Okay. Now, we're going to be hearing petitions open to public comment. Petitioners or the representatives will be given 10 minutes to present their petition. Subsequent individual citizens wishing to speak will be allowed a maximum of three minutes each, and representatives of an opposition group will be allowed a maximum of 10 minutes. At the end of the public hearing, there will be an allowance of three minutes for rebuttals. Our next order of business is a public hearing on the petition of Dantas Properties LLC for a conditional use permit on an I-2 light industrial district to allow the use of an existing structure as an athletic club for pickleball at 3200 Carroll Avenue. Who will present?
Members of Planning Commission, Dantas Properties, have submitted a petition for conditional use permit to allow the use of an existing structure as an athletic club for pickleball in an I-2 light industrial district at 3200 Carroll Avenue. The subject property was annexed into the city in 1958, and the existing I-2 light industrial district zoning was established in 1978. In this district, athletic clubs and recreational sports facilities are permitted upon approval of a CUP by council. The comprehensive plan, future land use map, recommends an employment-to-use for the subject property. The property is bound by a mix of residential and commercial uses, but the immediate surrounding area is zoned industrial. The subject property consists of approximately one and twenty-one hundredth acres and contains a one-story steel-framed structure constructed in 2025. The structure is approximately 6,600 square feet in size, and the petitioner is proposing to house the pickleball club in this building. The club would be a tenant build-out with two full-size courts, one practice court, locker rooms, bathrooms, and a lounge area. An additional 7,500-square-foot structure has been permitted for construction adjacent to the subject structure. The use of the existing structure as a pickleball club should have limited impact on the surrounding area. The club will only use a portion of the subject property, and the adjacent structure may still be used as industrial space. The club will be a tenant build-out, and the subject structure could be converted back to industrial space as needed. The technical review committee reviewed the petition on August 19th, and comments were minor in nature. The planning division recommends approval of the CUP petition.
Thank you. Who's here to speak on behalf of the petition? If you please come forward, state your name, sign in, and tell us a little bit more about it.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Norman Walton. And I'll keep this brief. Perkins and Orson did do a site plan for this facility just a few years ago, as Eve mentioned. It's under construction now. The property was originally intended to be warehouse space, as what the original site plan shows, but through marketing, it became evident that there was a need for an athletic facility. We all know how popular pickleball has become as of late, and so this opportunity arose to provide an indoor pickleball facility here. As we have it now, the use of the pickleball facility will not have any modifications to the site plan, except for a reorganization of parking and maybe some landscaping to encap new parking areas and such. It won't change any of the water demands or the sewer demands. The impervious area is going to stay the same, so the stormwater management facility that's built with the original site plan will remain the same as well. Mr. Tim Dantas with Dantas Properties is here, as am I, and we'll be more than happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you. Is anybody here to speak in favor of the petition? Norm, you might want to stay for a moment.
Sure.
Would you like to speak?
No.
Okay. And anybody here to speak in opposition? Okay. If you could please come forward, and you'll take a seat, and we'll call you back up for So please, sign in. There's a sign-in form, and then state your name, please.
My name is Todd Hall. I own the property at 3235 Mayflower Drive. I think I gave that correct number. I apologize for my notes being a little crude, but I didn't have much time to prepare. But I'm opposing the use of this building as a pickleball court. The location and placement of this steel building has already reduced the values of the homes next to it. Use of the building as a pickleball court is only going to reduce the values further. One of the reasons I'm opposing the use of this as a pickleball court, nothing in the packet is saying where and what kind of lighting is going in. Bad lighting locations and poorly-designed lighting can spill over into the neighboring homes and can cause glare affecting the homes at night. Another reason, pickleball is surprisingly loud. Since this is a residential area, the residents are going to be sleeping at night in order to work the next day. Increased noise is going to adversely affect the quality of life here. According to the original submitter, this place is going to be open 24/7. This means traffic late at night, players shouting and yelling during play, and all contributing to the increased noise. I had some pics here to kind of show you, to give you a better understanding, but according to the ladies here, I can't present them to you because I didn't get them to you earlier. I respectfully request the planning committee to reconsider the approval of this project until a more comprehensive review is conducted, such as a noise impact study, a traffic study, three, submittal of how the tenant is going to tailor the interior space for the operational requirements and the aesthetics to maintain the quality of life of the residents, four, a lighting study. Thank you for your attention to this matter, and I trust the committee will act in the best interest of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And seeing no one else in here, have there been any emails or voicemails about this? Okay. All right, well, we will... And Mr. Walton, if you might want to come forward and address those questions.
Thank you for the opportunity for rebuttal. The noise factor, I think, will be negated because all of these courts are indoors. The way it's going to be administered or ran is there will be scheduled times for the usage of the courts, so it's not a first-come, first-served basis. It'll be organized, you know, call-in and reserve the courts for use. We don't expect, you know, dozens of people to be here at the same time. It should be four people on each court, and then there's one practice court, which would have two people, so that would be, you know, 10 or so people at the facility at any given time. And I was looking through the site plan, and I apologize, I don't have this ready, and I don't think that we... I don't think we had outdoor lighting on the original site plan. But if outdoor lighting is installed, of course, it will have to meet the shielding requirements of the city code to not have more than a half a foot candle across any property line or the right-of-way line. So the city code does protect for glare distribution across the property lines. If you have any more questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Great, thank you. Okay, at this point, the public hearing's closed, and we can address any questions to staff or to the petitioner?
Yeah, we've got a couple things. When this was... You say this was originally floor-planned as a warehouse? Is that right? Yeah, who am I...
Yeah, you might come back up. Yeah. Mr. Walton?
Sorry, thank you. The floor plan for this... I mean, the proposal for this originally was a warehouse? Is that right?
Yes.
Rachel, was there anything... Do you know much about this? Because I can't access it on my thing here. Was there lighting originally proposed? I mean, I would think there'd be some kind of lighting proposed for a warehouse.
I can't speak to the site plan at this point. I don't know if you're able to pull it up.
I'm trying to pull it up.
So I guess the underlying question is, would it be any different?
Likely no. The industrial district standards are in play, no matter what uses go into the buildings.
So warehouse or pickleball, it's going to have those probably same or similar lighting arrangements?
Right.
There.
Well, and lighting has come up before with us, and I know that... It's not clear to me exactly. I think the city has a pretty good plan in place for reducing lighting. I never know for sure whether that means you can still have a bulb sticking up or whether it actually does have a true shield over it so it's pointing down at the parking But if... And I don't know what that means in terms of expense, but if the neighborhood is concerned about the lighting, there are certainly different levels or standards to address that.
And just to be clear, this building we're seeing here, that's not actually the pickleball?
That is the building that was constructed, that they're proposing to use.
So that's not the warehouse from the street?
That's originally a warehouse.
But I'm sorry, I'm just looking at this here.
Yeah, I think it was originally planned as a warehouse, and this one's under construction.
It's incomplete.
Correct.
The site is...
So the image that's there, the building that's erected, is the building that's in question, and then you can see a foundation nearer in the image, which is the second warehouse, which is the more rectangular building in the site plan that's on the left of the screen.
Gotcha.
And this... I was tardy coming to the meeting. Is this... Does this have operational hours, or is it 24/7?
Mr. Dantas, can you answer that?
Yeah, if you please state your name and sign on that form as well.
All right. Of the public record.
Okay. Tim Dantas. Initially, this was going to be 24/7, kind of like a 24-hour fitness kind of thing, where members can come in with a key fob. So no employees, they just kind of come in, everything monitored electronically. But we don't think people are going to be playing pickleball, you know, at 1:00 in the morning. I could be surprised, you know, but that's... If there is some form of restriction after some hours, you know, that wouldn't be an issue either.
Will the building be, when you're finished with it... I assume this is a four-season building. Some warehouses are simply metal buildings. This one, I... Do I assume correctly it's going to be insulated?
It's... The building is already insulated, so it's got insulation.
There's some sound.
No sound, insulation. And across the street, we have buildings that we've already put up that a lot of other business have come in, and I actually rent one of the units next to it ourselves, and you really can hear it, like Paul Davis and Merritt Restoration, a lot of these other businesses are in there, and you really can hear.
How far away are these... Is this building from September 25th?
It's across the street, but what... The thing was, the insulation works well. Like, that's my... That was my point. We have an office next door that you can't really hear anything that's going on inside those buildings. That was...
Planning Commission, I would offer that... Well, I do understand the concerns about noise. There are probably many uses that could go in this building by right that would be far, far noisier than the pickleball.
Yeah, I think, you know, one of the things that, you know, Mr. Hall's concerned, like the value and the lighting, you know, we can't really answer the value. I'm looking at this larger plan. It looks like a really large area of property that encompasses the work district. That's, you know, covering a lot of area that had homes. I know down on Clover, there were homes down there. So there's... Sometimes there's change, and zoning has been there, so it's kind of a by-right thing. But the lighting, I do think, is a valid question. I think that's important. But I think...
Yeah, the lighting...
Would you like to hear more about the city recommendations on parking lot lighting? I can't imagine...
Am I allowed to say that?
Sure.
So the buildings, when we put these up, they have wall packs in front of those doors that will eliminate out. In front of all of that, in front of the pickleball club, it's all woods. So there's nothing... The properties are behind the building, as you can see right over there. So there's no houses that are going to be eliminating towards it.
If you're able to email those, we could forward those to the commission, but we are not allowed to put a thumb drive in this computer because of IT security risks, and I'm sorry for that.
The neighbor right next to us, that small house to the southwest part, which is in front of that Old Dominion truck... I mean, Old Dominion has big spotlights pointing everywhere because they... And they run 24/7, and we've gone to both neighbors, the one right in front, Mr. Charlie right there, on both sides of the property, at the entrance of the pickleball club, and we've talked to them. And just to make sure, before we even did anything, we were trying to be, you know, respectful to the two neighbors that are right next to us, who would be affected the most, and both of them, actually Wade was even wants to join, you know, once it's set up. So, you know, so that's kind of the...
When you compare the alternative uses, if I lived in that neighborhood, I would prefer some sort of fitness center over just about anything else that could go in there, especially a trucking.
You've got like two trucking companies, it looks like, across the street from this thing, and whatever that third industrial thing is, I don't know what that is.
I mean, it's three courts, so that's a maximum of 12 people at one time. It's not going to be a lot of traffic, so...
Excuse me. If we... We can call you back up, but...
Yeah. So I guess I don't... I mean, to me, it's more appealing than the other options.
Are those two trucking companies right there, those two large?
Yes, sir.
To the left? So you've got trucks coming in and out of there pretty regularly?
Well, they run 24/7, because I've been there pretty late, those trucks. You know, they don't stop, right? They're all over the road. That's Old Dominion, which is nationwide. The two small, like, white buildings, smaller white buildings right on the north of the screen there, those are other buildings that we've built, same-style industrial flex warehouse space, and those are, you know, Merritt Restoration, United Health. There's actually a mechanic on one of them to just store his tools, and then Paul Davis, who's also like a restoration company. A lot of those actually are excited... They're excited because during the day, they have a place that they can... So it's almost been forming a community of all of these small businesses that we've been able to develop. You know, we have another like 25 acres around that we've been buying. It's going to be more industrial space to bring in small business, and then so this would give them, you know, like you said, something for during the day they can...
So to me, Mr. Hall?
Yes, sir.
Correct? Just a frank question, and in all honesty, because I want to get your take on this. Do you really feel like a pickleball court is going to be noisier than those two trucking companies and that other building across the street?
As I said in my presentation, I'm interested in till something is put in writing regarding the lighting and the noise.
I mean, are you looking for like a decibel level guarantee?
Well, nothing has been said about if the lighting in the parking lot of that proposed as a pickleball court, if it's going to be showing there in the next year. That photograph doesn't do the location justice.
It always looks different on the ground.
The sealed building is right in the light.
Excuse me.
It's not a mirror, it's back even. And my photograph shows where all that is, and it's not pleasant sight. The homeowner right next to it, he's already put this place up, so...
Yeah, I'm just trying to give you an opportunity to explain, because obviously you have a reason why you think it's going to be noisier or be as noisy as, so...
So I'd like to direct a question, staff, about zoning, conditional use permits. My understanding is, let's say the pickleball court, it goes, and then after a couple years, Mr. Dantas decides to close it down. At that point, any industrial use can be considered a cement. Finley can move in there, any kind of...
That one may be closer to I-3. I don't have to verify the ordinance.
What are the I-2?
Machine shops?
Machine shops, probably.
Could you kind of quickly go over a couple of the heavier things in I-2?
Heavy auto repair, lumberyard and building materials, commercial, industrial, or... Heavy auto repair, lumberyard and building materials, commercial, industrial, or consumer machinery and equipment, services to buildings and dwellings, you know, food and beverages, tobacco manufacturing, textiles, wood products, paper and printing materials, furniture and related products, chemicals, plastic and rubber products, non-metallic mineral products, primary metal manufacturing, transportation equipment manufacturer, machinery, electrical equipment, appliance and components manufacturing, transportation equipment in automobiles, blacksmith, wholesale trade establishment, office and warehousing, warehousing, air transportation, rail passenger, of course, not all of these are going to fit the site.
No retract. Okay, so I think, I mean, I think what we have is, we have this situation where this is all I-2 land.
Right.
And I have been by the building and spent some time looking at it, and it seems to me that the entrances are facing away from your property, so the lighting, is there lighting along the back of the building?
There is none.
And the, and the lighting is covered on the front, it has an overhang, right?
Correct. They're, they're designed to eliminate the entrances and the parking lot. And, but just one more thing to address, the, the traffic, you know, it's, it's going to be a membership base, so it's a limited, it's not going to be open where you can have 50 people show up and they're waiting around to try to get a court. It's a limited membership, also because we're trying to build it to where it's, when you reserve the court online, you show up and the court, you know, it's available. So we're not expecting any more than 100 to 125 members, and that's it. So very limited membership, kind of, almost like a golf club, you know, or kind of style.
So, did I understand correctly that you have lighting there on the site now? It's attached to the building somehow, or how?
It's wired, we are not connected to, to the, AP has not come in and connected yet.
Okay, so the lights aren't...
It's still under construction.
It's still in the construction. So, so we finished the, from the picture, that building is done, the actual, all of the, where you see the stub outs for the rough ends on the bathrooms, on the slab on the right side of the picture?
Correct.
That whole building is completed already.
Okay.
So Columbia, you know, we've had some utilities that are running some stuff there this week and last week, but the wall packs that go on the building, it's more to eliminate downward and out just a certain, you know, because that, that was one of the concerns on the building.
Yeah.
Across the street that we put up, and it hasn't been, you know, it's actually, everything is illuminating away from, you know, really like Mr. Archie's house, who's the one house like right there.
So, so that, that lighting, was that approved in the site plan?
It was, yes, sir.
Okay. So, so that's, that's acceptable, I mean, that lighting's acceptable then, is that correct, is that?
If it was installed the way it was shown on the plan, then yes, it should need the ordinance in the event that things are not installed the way it's specified on the plan. We operate on a complaint basis.
Sure.
So if there were more light trespass than is supposed to be allowed, the zoning administrator has a device that measures it at the property line that we can go out and verify if we believe something may be out of regulation.
Okay. And is there, is there, I guess, I mean, is there anything to deviate from what's on the site plan for the lighting? Is it, do...
No.
Yeah.
Whatever was thrown into contractors is...
Okay.
Pretty much.
So, so if, I see in the parking, I see some little bump outs, if you were to come in there and, for example, put some light poles with parking lot lighting that would illuminate the front of that building, that wouldn't be acceptable in this, that's not part of the site plan, because that would be a light issue, right? That would be facing that building and going around the sides of it. You don't have any parking lot lighting in that?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and any new, I guess, and just to kind of follow on with that, any new lighting would be a change to the site plan and would have to go through TRC approval?
Would consider it, yeah, an amendment to the site plan?
Okay.
I mean, I think, if this was an outdoor pickleball courts with floodlights and the noise, we'd be having a whole different conversation.
Mm-hmm.
But the fact that they're indoors, there's no lighting going up in the parking lots, and to me, it's still a smaller impact across the board than something else. And we, and we don't want to fall into that trap of that argument, by right could be worse, but in this case, it seems like a legitimate consideration. I would, I would support the petition.
I would say it's not only, not a liability, if I had this coming into my neighborhood, I don't, I don't play pickleball, but I know a lot of people who do, and I'm sure like people like Mr. Hall would disagree, but I would consider it a positive. You know, it's nice to have something, you know, close by, you know, like that Crunch Fitness, I think, went in recently, and it's closer, and Planet Fitness, you know, but not everybody does those sorts of things. It seems to me to be a positive addition, so that's, that's where I'm going to land on it.
I would agree, I absolutely hear your concerns related to the potential impact, but based off of everything that I'm hearing, this sounds like a great opportunity for this, this community, and I know that's subjective, but I would also be in support.
Any other comments or an emotion?
I'll make a motion too.
I'll second.
Okay. Any comments for a vote? All right, all in favor of the petition, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Say no? Haven't heard any? It's unanimous, but of course, this has to go to city council, so, you know, you have information you want to pass on, please make sure you get that to city council, and then good luck for you all there.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Our next item, we're going to hear the consideration of naming a new private road at 1700 Enterprise Drive as Water's Edge Circle. We're going to have a vote on this, and I wanted to clarify something. We have two name changes, one is for a private road and one is obviously for public inventory, and the one that's for public, we just comment on, and the one that's private, we vote on. Why would we vote on that? Is that because they get to use the name and we're letting them use the name?
No, it's because it's not within a subdivision, so it doesn't fall under the subdivision ordinance. So if it is in a subdivision, you have the opportunity to comment, but ultimately, it's accepted with the plat by the city manager's office.
Okay. All right. So is there any presentation on this?
Just a really brief one. Virginia Baptist Homes is petitioning to name a new street as Water's Edge Circle. The Summit Retirement Community is constructing the street to serve nine new hybrid homes. The new street will be private and will be accessed off of Grand Summit Drive, an existing private street. The technical review committee reviewed the petition on September 3rd and had no comments of concern. Again, this is brought before you for a vote because it is not within a subdivision.
Great. And what is a hybrid home?
I was just going to ask.
I mean, I think I have, I think I have an inkling, but people should know.
I believe it's, you know, individuals live there, but they also have people coming in to help care for them, so it's kind of a hybrid of independent, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
It's a lot of construction right down there.
I can guess.
Any, any comments? Or anybody want to make a motion to go ahead and accept this?
I'll make a motion to go ahead and accept. Second.
Okay. All right. Make, we're going to vote on whether to accept the name. Motion's been accepted, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? No? All right. We've got that one. And then the last thing we have is the consideration of naming a street in the Stables on Coffee Subdivision as Arabian Drive, and that's just open for comments because it's already been put out in the plat, right?
Yes, correct. So Coffee Road is petitioning to name a new street as Arabian Drive. The public street will be located in the Stables on Coffee Subdivision. Only a small portion of the subdivision and street will be located within city limits and will be located off of Hawkins Mill Road. The technical review committee reviewed the petition on September 3rd and had no comments of concern, and it is now brought before you for comment. So that little red cir, or red, shapes are hard, that little red rectangle is the part that will be in the city.
Right, the rest is in county, yeah.
So if we don't do this, then we can force them to name it two different names.
No, I don't think that's how that would work.
What would you name it, Chuck?
Gamma Court, I think, sounds good. I think that would be a logical choice, in this case.
We can't use Gamma Court, I'll just stick with the Arabian.
Charles Way?
Any concerns over Arabian Drive?
It's funny, it reminds me a little bit of the commercial development over where Coles is, where just a portion is in the city, and then the rest is in the county.
Sounds right, Comson.
Comson, yeah.
Rachel, you asked if there would be any concerns, what would be the framework for thinking around that?
Just the only, I mean, when we're reviewing it as staff, we're saying, is there anything too similar that may cause confusion when people, you know, try to dial into 911 and causes confusion over where to send the services if it sounds too similar to something else?
Is there another?
No.
I feel like we had, we've had one before, though, that we had for comment that had a similar, similar name, it was bouncing around.
Yeah, we've had them where it's been, one's been court and one's been street.
Yeah.
It is confusing.
Well, and curiously, how does the name, how is it, how is it, like, who?
Who comes up with it?
Yeah.
Generally, the developer of the subdivision.
The property...
I think they're going with a horse theme here.
Gotcha.
Arabian is a type of horse.
One of its last names in rural areas. And the family, I think, lives on the streets, don't they?
Okay, gotcha. It's very helpful.
Great, okay, well, we don't need to vote on that, so you heard our comment. Anything, anything that...
Vote on, vote on Gamma Court?
Any, I would, I would point out, I think it's really interesting what's happened in the news the last couple weeks, you know, they have this big data center proposal in Campbell County now, up at the top of English Tavern, really pretty area, and, you know, there's a lot of communities in, up in arms about it. So I think that that is crazy, that was like a week after our meeting, and that came up.
I saw that.
And it's kind of been, I think, going on, but under the, under the radar.
Aren't they proposing two or three?
Yeah, I think, I think there's, there's some things going on that, and I think that's what we're trying to avoid, is letting things slide under the radar before it gets sprung on us, so...
All right, so we're, we're still moving forward with that.
We, I'm not sure what meeting we'll plan to bring that to you, but we are, we are pursuing that, yes.
All right, well, any other business?
I'll just say that Central Virginia Planning District Commission is holding a multimodal transportation meeting at Miller Center this evening, it goes on until 6:30, if anyone would like to...
Where is it?
As a commissioner, multimodal transportation.
Well, I mean, is it anything, is it a general discussion of these types of options that can be employed in a potential plan, or is it dealing with a specific proposal?
It's not a specific proposal, it's a citywide look at multimodal transportation at Miller Center this evening until 6:30.
Oh, right at Miller Park.
And it's for, like, people transportation, freight transportation, any, anything?
Generally, movement of people, cars, bikes, sidewalks, yeah.
Trolley, streetcar.
I won't say anything's off the table.
Yeah, probably.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Anybody opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Let's go, thank you.
I did that up for a specific reason.